And I'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance followed by Daniel Mahoney. I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Different patterns.
Lord, in prayer, I ask that you clear our minds about our own personal agendas and you clear our hearts and open it for the right purpose, your purpose, Lord. We thank you for everything that you've done for us. Thus fire the guidance that you give us in tonight for me to make proper decisions for the county of Jackson. Lord, we also want to say a special prayer for the Kevin Bentley and the K-105 family of Jackson, who we have lost a great leader in our community and just want to give acknowledgement and prayer to his family tonight. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Madam Clerk, would you like to call the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Present.
Mr. Walz.
Present.
Mr. Kennedy.
Here.
Mr. Duckham.
Here.
Commissioner Poleski.
Here.
Mr. Mahoney.
Good evening, President.
Good evening. Commissioner Williams.
Present.
Commissioner Elwell.
Here.
Chairman Chatwell. All present.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Entertain a motion to approve the agenda. So moved.
Support.
Move by Duckham.
Support.
Support by Mahoney. Any additions? deletions or corrections? Hearing none.
Chairman Chatwell.
Show the sign or say aye.
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 When we get to the committee to the consent agenda, I have a couple requests.
David, did Tony and Rodney and Cory get it in?
Yes. It was unanimous.
Thank you. We have no warrant of recognition. We have any communications or petitions? Hearing none. Special orders and public hearings. We're going to have a public hearing on the annexation of a property in Parma Township to the village of Parma. I'd like to open the public hearing. Entertain a motion.
So moved. Support.
Moved by Commissioner Williams. Supported by Commissioner Baer. Is that correct, Tony? Thank you.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Any one would like to step up to the microphone and speak about this?
Mr. Chairman, Jim Jenkins from the village of Parma. What this is about, we have a property that is right at the border of the village in Parma Township that's been illegally hooked up to the village's sewer system for a long time. We found out about it. We tried to remedy the situation and the remedy really is, our ordinance has called it they have to be in the village. The former owner, Chuck Olson, Olson Meyer May, you may be familiar with him, does a lot of drain work and water work in the county. He owned the building, but he's not the one that hooked up to the sewer. It was the people that originally built the building. They lived next door and they just hooked their sewer up to us without telling anybody. So once we found out, we had a remedy to the situation and everybody's agreed. Finally, Parma Township was the last one to agree to annex it into the village. And that's really the long and short of it. Everybody have any questions?
Yes.
No, Mr. Jenkins.
In the room?
Tony has a question, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Reading through the board packet, the village voted on and approved this annexation in March 13, 2018. Why has it taken two years and eight months to get here?
Most of it was Parma Township. They said yes before, you know, not a formal vote, but yes, they would. Then all of a sudden, they withdrew it and then they went back and said, yes, they would and then no, they wouldn't. So just kind of fell by the wayside too. Some of it, as I understand, because I wasn't involved with the paperwork filing and all the stuff down here, was there was some mix-ups down here too, as I understand.
Is this land in Parma Township or in Sandstone Township?
Parma. Sandstone's across the street. It's Union Street and Parma Road. Currently, it's Parma Road while across the street is Union Street, so.
Okay. How does someone just illegally hook up?
Pretty easy. Just big ditch.
No bill increment, no billing inspections?
No, not in this. Not in this case, right. And they live next door and it was from their sewer tap. So this was, this has been there, as I understand. I've been village president for 20 years and it was before that. Didn't know about it at all.
So it appears to me we have two solutions. One is to disconnect them. Two is to annex it and accept it.
Correct. And what's funny is our lift station is right out in front of this building. I mean, it's physically in front of it. You walk out the front door, you run into it, so.
Okay, so eventually Parma Township is in agreement with this?
Yes.
Thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Mr. Chairman, I've got one question maybe for Mike more than Jim. Mike, it makes no difference to us, makes no difference to us financially either way. There's no cost to us and no loss of revenue, tax revenue for doing this, correct?
Right.
And then lastly, you've researched it to know that this is all that's needed from us is a simple resolution, the public hearing and then assuming the resolution passes and then it's a done deal?
Correct. They had, we've had the three notices in the newspaper and all that sort of thing. It's all been followed. Everyone has had opportunity and now it's just a matter of holding a public hearing and ultimately making a determination of whether the board is so inclined.
And there's no vote required of the residents of either municipality, which you sometimes hear of, but not in this case, correct?
Correct. No, no, the village acts the law there. I cited it. It is very clear that it is truly up to the county commissioners to vote it up or down.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions? Any other comments? Seeing our hearing none, at this time, I would close the public hearing. Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Bill Duckham is supported by? Period?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Any comments to the motion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye or show the sign.
Aye.
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 Thank you. Motion passed. We've arrived at public comment, the first opportunity. Each individual will state their name. They have three minutes to address the board. We address the board only once. Under this public comment, they may not yield their time to others. Board members will not debate nor answer questions at this time. Michelle, is there anyone for public comment?
Terry McKinnon.
Go ahead, Terry.
Does Terry know that he or she needs to unmute, Michelle?
Terry McKinnon, please unmute. There you go. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Terry McKinnon. I live in Leoni Township. And I just, I wanted to come on tonight to talk about the opportunity I got in the last couple of weeks to be a temporary member of the County Board of Canisters. It was really just such a great experience. Thank you, Amanda, for helping you and Jenny making it that way. There were three teams of us, each a team of Republican and a Democrat working together. And it was, my understanding is a lot longer than normally it goes, but I credit that to everybody's dedication to making sure that all of the results were verified and accurate. And all of the people that worked on that together were a great group of people. And I just wanted to say tonight that there's been a lot of anger and division in the world, but being in that room, the effort with people coming together with a common cause of making sure that our election was fair and accurate was such a rewarding experience. And it really helped me to feel a lot more relieved about the exit county and the people who live here. So thank you all for that experience, especially you, Amanda.
Next, complete the people for public comment.
That's it for the virtual side.
Anyone in the audience who would like to address the board?
It appears not.
Thank you. Special meeting of standing committees, there are none. At this time, we're at item eight, approval of the minutes of the October 20th, 2020 meeting of the Board of Commissioners.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Duckham, supported by Commissioner Kennedy. That's a question, not a direct comment. Your support. Thank you. Any corrections, deletions, otherwise? Hearing none. All in favor, show the sign or speak up.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We've arrived at the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion for the consent agenda?
So moved. Support.
I would like to take two items from the consent, public safety and transportation agenda, out of the consent and put them under, I guess, new business, the two items being 9C, JC dot farmland lease, and item 9, 8, Jackson County Department of Transportation tree policy.
David, I'd like to move those to item 13B and C. Are you comfortable with that, Mr. Vice Chair?
That'll be fine.
Okay.
Where were they moved to?
Seeing our hearing none, Madam Clerk, call Mr. Walz.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Baer? Mr. Walz?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Duckham?
Yes.
Commissioner Poleski?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Elwell?
Yes.
Chairman Chatwell?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We've arrived at standing committees, number 13, chaired by Vice Chairman David Elwell, Public Safety and Transportation. Vice Chairman Elwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First up, we have appointments tonight. We have two committees, the Jackson Area Transportation Authority. The county representative, Phil Moylan, was the current member. He's resigned. There were no applicants at committee nor recommendations from committee. And if there are no nominations from the floor, we'll continue to advertise it. And secondly, we have the Community Corrections Advisory Board. This is a workforce development position. It is a vacant seat. Again, there were no applicants at committee nor recommendations and pending any nominations from the floor, we'll continue to advertise for it. And that is it for appointments, which takes us to the JC dot farmland lease, which we did have substantial discussion on it at study session. And I will so move for approval of that. And I'm sure Tony wants to discuss it after we get a second.
Support.
I'm going to go ahead and let you handle that whole thing, David. Who is your supporter? Cory?
Cory, correct.
Please continue.
All right, discussion.
Yep, absolutely. Chris, maybe you want to step up or is somebody from JC dot online?
Mr. Commissioner, Commissioner Elwell, your correction. We did have a lengthy discussion on this. I got halfway through my discussion. It was suggested that I just give my red line markups to J dot and let them respond. They did respond in an email that they thought most of my suggestions, my comments were valid and that they needed to make some changes in future bidding with Calhoun County. So my one question is that since my comments were deemed valid and helpful, how come not one single syllable was changed from what we discussed at standing committee to what is presented tonight for approval? I compared my red lines with a document that is on board docs tonight. Absolutely no changes. Did the correct one get put on board docs or did every comment just get ignored for, well, not ignored totally, but considered only for future contracts?
Tony, I will interject that, as I recall, we got a lengthy email from Chris detailing many of the questions, but Chris, do you have comments on it?
Thank you very much. I would just comment and clarify that this is a request for bids, request for proposals, however we term it. And for lack of a better phrase, it's water under the bridge. It was sent out by Calhoun and I documented in my correspondence the problems that we saw with it, that we had issued some comments to them and they were not implemented. And it was sent out without our blessing, our final blessing. However, just looking through the lens of, you know, is there any substantial problem with the RFP? Should it be rejected and redone? I didn't find any basis for that. So while your concerns were valid and I thank you very much for those, we definitely are going to make improvements moving forward. I don't see any basis for rebidding it. In fact, in the last bid three years ago, we only had the same one bidder. So if we felt that it was unfair to other bidders or there was some lack of clarity there, I think we would have definitely rejected all bids and redid the whole document.
All right, so it wasn't deemed necessary for this bid to make any changes, but my comments will be taken into consideration in future biddings?
Absolutely. Yes, thank you.
I can accept that. I appreciate your email response. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tony. I'll just comment too. Chris, I appreciate the detailed response from you. You and I discussed it as well outside of the study session. And there was a discussion about it being boilerplate language, but this is a local contract. We hear boilerplate a lot when it comes to federal or state contract, but this is a local one. And although I may not be here for future contracts, I'd be willing to bet they'll look a lot different and be tailored to fit our needs, not Calhoun's. Fair statement.
Indeed, that's the case, especially when it's of, you know, substantial benefit just us here in Jackson County. We plan to separate those and do those ourselves.
Okay. Any other questions from commissioners present in the chamber? Any questions from commissioners online? If not, I think the clerk should call the roll on this, Mr. Chairman. You agree? Okay. Amanda?
Certainly. Commissioner Walz?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Sorry, was that a yes?
Yes.
Yes, it was.
Mr. Duckham?
Yes, please.
Mr. Poleski?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Elwell?
Yes.
Mr. Baer?
Yes.
Chairman Chatwell?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you, Amanda.
Mr. Elwell, please continue.
This takes us to the last item, which is the JC dot tree policy. And again, this is a policy developed at the request of the commissioners. It went through committee, was discussed in study session. It came up last month's business meeting, was sent back for additional work. That's been done. I'm satisfied with it and appreciate the hard work by JC dot. And I would move for approval of the tree policy, tree trimming policy. Support.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Kennedy. Amanda, are there any questions in the chamber? I'm assuming, Tony. Go ahead. Yes.
Chris, I appreciate your efforts on this. Well, the question is, I believe future, no, I believe previous iterations of this policy did include the, a link that could be touched to get to the MDNR tree trimming policies or recommendations and to the U.S. Department of Agriculture tree trimming policies. I don't see those links in here right now. I only see the furbage that says we need to refer to the ANSI A300, which by copyright laws, we cannot link to. So what was the rationale for not having the DNR and USDA links on this?
I recognize, Chris. Go ahead.
Thank you. I do have a copy of the ANSI 300. It did come. It was shipped to us just this week, so I'm happy to pass that around or just provide it, leave it on sixth floor for your perusal. We do need to keep a copy there, as we've discussed. I'm happy to put the links in. In conversations with administration, we felt that most policies don't have such links in the policy themselves. However, perhaps a motion could be made with that condition and it could be easily added. It's just a suggestion.
Mike, can I ask if there's an issue with putting the links in the policy for that? And we did have, as I recall, substantial discussion about why not to put elements of the policy in it because things change. And if we put the links in, then there's always the updated version. So is there a reason we can't put the links in?
No, we can put the links in. On board docs, it's online. The links will automatically, you know, they're different color. And we're talking a public DNR site, so it's not like it's some secret. It's a public record. Unlike that other document that we cannot link to or make copies available online.
Okay, so to be clear, my motion was inclusive of having the links that we're able to embed it where we can. Okay. Any other questions from commissioners in the chamber? Commissioners online, any questions to the motion?
I'd like to say something, David.
Okay, and then Daniel, after you. Go ahead, Steve.
I became, I became aware just this week that there are other agencies within the state that designate trimming and cleaning and removal of invasive species and other items for control. Are we expected to link all of them to this document? Because if we are, we could be tying, hamstringing ourselves a little bit with this. It's a real concern on my part. I was reading just today a report from our CISMRA director about two new plants that just appeared here, one in Albion and another one in the state also. I just, I just think we could be, we could get ourselves out of sequence or into real trouble if we attempt to link to just one specific document. And I don't think it's a good idea to attempt even link to all the recognized documents. I think we should just have, while we have the policy in place for our employees and a procedure in place for them, maybe we, maybe we designate four hours in the springtime for training for JC dot, so that way Chris and his staff have reviewed everything with everyone. I just, I'm just a little concerned about hamstringing ourselves to one document. That's all. That's my two cents.
Daniel?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And I just appreciate Chairman Chatwell's comments on it. I've got some similar concerns. I guess my major concern again, which I mentioned in committee as well as study session, is I feel like this particular policy seems very specific to only oak trees in a particular way. We have to prune oak trees to avoid oak wilt. And I'm just curious why we don't have a policy for every single kind of tree? Because I'm sure that there are particular diseases that all trees can get. I think that we should, you know, I'm in support of a tree trimming policy, but I wouldn't support this policy because it's specific to one type of tree, being oak trees and oak wilt. So for that reason, I wouldn't be supporting this unless we can make this just a general tree trimming policy, because I think that the county's not in the business of keeping trees, but keeping our roadways clear. And that's the main reason that we would be trimming trees. This kind of lends me to believe that not only are we going to be trimming trees, but we're going to be trimming them to make sure that we're taking care of those particular trees. And unless we're going to give that special attention to all trees, I don't think that it should be specific to one type of tree.
Okay, any other commissioners online that wish to comment? I just got two comments at the end here. Again, I appreciate the hard, appreciate the hard work of JC dot on it. And I think it's been said by them that we'll be the first road department or road commission in the state that has a policy that's detailed. And as, I'm not a horticulturist, but as I understand it with oak trees, they're typically tied together by their root systems. And if they're not trimmed properly or sealed properly, or if it's not done at the right time of year, you could wipe out an entire stand of oak trees. And that's one of the things that makes it unique. Back to the linking the relevant documents, we haven't stated which ones to link in the policy. I trust that the administration will link the relevant ones. And my recollection in the study session was that that was seen as the best way to approach this versus putting every little detail in there that at least one commissioner wanted. And he seemed satisfied with putting the links for those documents in there. So I leave it to the administration, being Mike and Chris, to decide which of those documents need to be linked within the policy. Daniel, I see your hand up again. Go ahead. And then Mike wants to talk. Go ahead, Daniel.
Sorry, just one more, just one more thought. Dave, thank you very much for allowing me just another opportunity just to finish my thought on what else came up. As you were talking, it reminded me that another concern that I had was the, while in our, in the staff report, it states that there's going to be no additional cost to the county, but it states that additional costs that may come up will be addressed when they come up. Which again leads me to believe that this is going to have additional, that has to be taken by employees, to the standard of oak, according to trying to get rid of oak wilt. Lends me to believe that it's going to be some type of indirect cost to the county as well, specifically for oak trees. So I just wanted to make sure that I added that comment and concern in there, because I feel like that point was not clarified by administration on exactly what those additional costs would look like. Because it says that we'll address those, we will pay that bill when it comes in, and it's going to be an indirect cost.
Thanks, Daniel. Daniel, just for information, we're starting to go digital just a little bit. If you have comments, again, I'd suggest you shut down the video. Michael?
Couple thoughts. One, thank you for your comments, Commissioner Mahoney and Chairman Chatwell. I don't necessarily disagree. I do think that this policy, while it does speak to mention oak wilt, it's really an overall tree policy and indicative of plight, blight and so forth that may affect. that may affect all trees that we'll be looking at. We do consider trees a part of the roadway. They are an asset to a community. They add value to, uh, the community. So you ask to try to cut down somebody's tree in their front yard and you'll know what I mean by that. Uh, they, they value those. But yes, along the roadway, we have a primary obligation for, for the health, safety and welfare of our roadway, our users. And, uh, so, you know, we need to take a look at that. And far as the costs go, I would venture to say that the costs are not additional to what we're already doing. If a tree dies, we have to remove it. If a tree, you know, so, uh, you can, we can argue probably that, uh, by maintaining the tree properly, cutting it properly and, and doing things in a timely fashion that are, uh, in the best interest of the tree, we might save money by not having to cut it down prematurely. Uh, so it, it's a give and take, uh, on there for sure. Uh, but trees do cost money, there's no doubt, and they are part of, uh, the roadway that we have to maintain.
Darius?
Thank you, just a quick question. Um, so I haven't really been the biggest fan of this particular policy only because JC Dot already has, um, the workings in which they know, they know what to do when it comes to clean roads, retreat and degree, et cetera. So I guess my, my question then becomes, why do we really need this if we already have procedures and how to handle the situations?
Well, I would, if I may, uh, I, I would tell you that, um, uh, I, I would agree in the sense that we do follow best practices. We always have. Uh, we are a department that, uh, you know, is ahead of the curve, I'll say that, Christopher's department especially. Uh, and, but it's true across the county. We look at the science, we look at the data on best practices. Uh, we compare ourselves, as you know, nationally and across the state and other counties because we want to be, uh, a premier organization and do things the right way the first time. Not that we get it all right all the time, we don't, but for not for lack of trying and doing some homework on it. This year, uh, uh, policy came up because there was felt, felt there was a belief that we needed, uh, a little more direction on that. And, uh, we have no problem putting together a policy. Uh, it's more or less what we've been doing, but yet it codifies it. And I think it could be also, uh, the advantage would be it's an example perhaps for other road departments across the county and counties, across the state, I should say.
Okay, any additional?
On the file.
Any additional questions? Tony?
This is definitely a tree policy that applies to every species of tree throughout the whole document with the exception of one paragraph. It just says tree, doesn't mention whether it's birch, oak, maple, mussel tree, doesn't matter. The only paragraph is paragraph two I that mentions oak. And it says to prevent oak wilt. So this document is entirely a, this applies to every single tree, including invasive species of trees. So it's, it's not an oak policy, it's a tree policy.
Okay, I think we've certainly thoroughly covered the tree policy through several meetings. So I will call the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye or making the sign. Aye? Those opposed, the same?
Aye.
Amanda, did you get that? Darius was a no. Daniel, I didn't catch what your vote was?
I was a no as well.
Oh, okay. So we have seven yays and two nays. You good, Amanda?
Yes.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report for Public Safety and Transportation. Thank you.
Thank you. Item fourteen, Standing Committee of Human Services chaired by Daniel Mahoney, Commissioner Mahoney.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Uh, the Human Services Committee has no business to bring before the Board of Commissioners tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Mahoney. Standing Committee General Government chaired by Commissioner Phil Duckham, Commissioner Duckham.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, we have one item in business tonight that will be an appointment. Uh, we have an appointment. We have an appointment for the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. This will be a township supervisor position. Our current member is Jim Dunn, who is vacating the position. Uh, we have an applicant, Pete Janzick. And Pete Janzick was the committee recommendation.
So moved.
I'll bring him forward.
Any nominations from the floor? Hearing none. David, you are supporting Pete Janzick, is that correct?
Correct.
Yes, sir. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye, aye.
All right. What's wrong? Commissioner Duckham?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's our only item of business tonight. Thank you.
We have no unfinished business to come before the Board of Commissioners this evening. Item seventeen E, Parma Annexation. Entertain a motion for the resolution?
So moved.
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion in support. Any questions? Comments? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, could you call the wall?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Duckham?
Yes.
Mr. Polaski?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
I didn't catch that, I think you said yes. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Elwell?
Yes.
Mr. Baer?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Chairman Chatwell?
Yes.
You know.
Item seventeen B, Medical Care Facility Maintenance of Effort. Entertain, entertain a motion and then support and we'll get an explanation from staff.
So moved.
Support. I have a motion by Commissioner Williams, support by Commissioner Duckham. Administrator Overton, could you explain what this is all about?
Yeah, this is an annual event. Um, the maintenance of effort money is that the board approved back then, what was it? I think 2010, I think something goes back. Um, the annual transfer so they can, uh, help pay the bill. I mean, it's pretty straightforward because anybody have any questions or concerns or anything specific that you'd like to add that I'm not saying right there?
We have a motion in support. Hearing no questions. Madam Clerk, could you call the wall?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Mr. Duckham?
Yes.
Mr. Polaski?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Elwell?
Yes.
Mr. Baer?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Chairman Chatwell?
Yes.
You know.
We now arrive at item seventeen C, Designated Assessor. This time, I'd like to entertain a motion and support and then we'll let Ruth explain this to us.
I'll move adoption of the resolution, Mr. Chair. Support.
I got, Commissioner Polaski, who supported that, Dave?
I did.
Thank you.
Matt, good evening. Um, this is, I brought this to you tonight basically just to, um, kind of introduce the new information and answer questions, um, that you might have. Um, as you know, I've been kind of mentioning this, bringing it up for the last couple of years in my reports, my staff reports. Uh, but we haven't really had any guidelines or samples until this last month, um, from the state. And, um, and it's still a bit of a moving target. It's, they're trying to work out legalities. They had some legal questions and whatnot that they, uh, you know, referred to the Attorney General and gone back and forth and, um, have kind of ironed things out. Um, and so I imagine that there's still going to be some adjustments over time. But, um, basically this has to do with, um, the assessing reform law that was passed in 2018, P A six sixty. And one of the requirements, along with, um, sweeping changes for requirement processes in townships, one of the requirements is that each county must, um, assign a designated assessor. And it has to be, uh, board approved and a majority of the townships, um, have to approve. Um, from what I have seen so far, and like I said, it's basically just over the last couple of months that counties have finally had the information and we just kind of, you know, move forward with it. Um, most of what I'm seeing is that if, um, the equalization director in the county is willing to be the designated assessor, um, most counties are going with that because then they're usually, uh, there is a fee charged, you know, retainer fee. If you have to bring in someone from outside, then they're usually going to charge a retainer fee to be that designated assessor, kind of an annual fee for all the townships. It doesn't really affect the county a whole lot, uh, but it does affect the, the, um, local townships. Um, kind of, you know, as, as kind of a background for this, um, this, we have to have the designated assessor, um, application by the end of the year. Um, they will be processing through these. There is only one that I know of thus far that's been considered and possibly approved. So we may have some back and forth, but we've got to get the initial agreement to them by the end of the year. Um, so, so that has to be in place as part of the law. Then in 2022 is when the new requirements for assessment administration, um, come into law. 2023 is going to be the first AMR review that is affected. We have an AMR review this next year, um, under the current set of standards. And so our first AMR review under this new, um, under these new requirements will be in 2026. Um, kind of some other information is, um, basically what happens is that, um, if someone fails an AMR review, a local township, they have to submit, um, a correction plan. And, uh, they have one year to correct that. This is under the new guidelines. The old ones that could stretch out for a number of years. And we actually had a couple in Jackson County that did stretch out for a number of years. And this last year, we assumed one and one got a new assessor. Um, but, but this kind of shortens, condenses that timeframe. And basically, um, if you, if you fail something in the AMR, you know, they give you a report, they tell you what your decision is, you give them, um, remediation plan, you have one year to complete that plan unless, um, a full reappraisal is, is required for the township. Um, then it construction to two years. Um, if they come back after a year and they do a, a second AMR, um, or check and see if those items have been remediated and you haven't, you haven't corrected those things, then at this point, um, they're going to have to hire somebody new or, um, they're going to have to move to the designated assessor. Or they can go to the county. Um, that's their option. And if they choose, um, to, you know, hire a new assessor and whatnot, and then after that year, they still don't get those items corrected, then it automatically goes to the designated assessor. Um, so, and these, you know, the, the guidelines from the state, like I said, are still being kind of developed. Um, they put out quite a bit in the last few months, so we're getting a clearer picture of exactly what's going to be required. But, um, it still, there will still be some adjustment, I'm sure. Um, I did have a meeting, um, I met with Administrator Overton and, um, then I met with, um, the local supervisors on October 29th. Kind of went through this with them and what the requirements were, um, and brought this contract to them, um, designated, designating me as the designated assessor as the equalization director of Jackson County. Um, we had a majority there, I think there were thirteen or fourteen supervisors, and it was unanimous, they voted to approve. Now, they can't really, you know, um, they've got to take it back to their boards and all of that, and they are doing that right now. I've already got some resolutions back from them. Um, you know, I wanted you guys to have time to, um, read through this and, uh, review it. Um, there's only been a couple of contracts that have been out there. Now I'm seeing a few more coming through. Um, and so, you know, basically this, this next round, this next five-year round, um, there will probably only be one to two years that this might kick in. And, you know, I was just up front with the supervisors and told them, look, I'm going to do everything I can to make sure that you don't need a designated assessor because I really don't want that on my plate necessarily. Um, I would encourage them to, uh, come to county assessing if they wanted to. Um, but, um, I will do everything I can to help them and guide them through that AMR process so that they do not find themselves in that hot water. So, um, do you have any questions? Is there, have you had a chance to look at this at all?
Yes. If you come up with questions afterwards, please direct them to Administrator Overton's office so we can gather them all, get them to Ruth and get them explained back to us. We have a motion and a second. See no further questions. Madam Clerk, could you please call the wall?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Polaski?
Yes.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Elwell?
Yes.
Mr. Baer?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Duckham?
Uh, yeah, yes.
Chairman Chatwell?
Yes. Yeah. Thank you.
If I may? Just for a second. Uh, I, you know, I appreciate the fact that you guys approved this, and as long as you're comfortable, I won't bring it back to study session, but, uh, we were thinking that we would take questions and answer those or come up, you know, and then bring it to study session for final approval. Um, you just approved it if you're comfortable. Uh, let's put it this way, if we don't receive any questions, uh, uh, we believe, you know, we can't answer it or something like that, or we believe they'll make a change to it, we'll bring it back, but otherwise, I think we're calling it good. Um, so feel free though, if you have something, if something pops up. Is that okay, sir?
Well, hold on. We have to do this, right?
Yes.
And we have one of the best assessors in the state, right?
We very much agree.
Okay, so I think we've hired the best professional. We have the administrator controller who's produced a document that carries us through. And as always, Mike, if you've made a mistake, we know.
We will surely let you know if we did. But we, we believe it, it's fit and frankly, to Ruth's credit, uh, it's not just you saying that, it's the township supervisors across the whole county believe that, uh, Ruth is the best and fair-minded and very capable of doing this. And, and like Ruth said, she doesn't really want to do it, but, um, it really is good for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth. Thank you, Ruth. And your staff for making us all look good. And your staff for making us all look good. We thank you very much for your professionalism. We've arrived at the second round of public comment. Michelle?
There's no public comment on the virtual side.
Thank you. Anyone in the audience, David?
Any public comment here? None.
Commissioner comments? Commissioner Mahoney?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Just want to start by saying thank you to Terry McKinnon and the other county canvassers who served on the Board of County Campuses for us and the hard work that they did there in direction, keeping things fair, keeping things honest, and doing things the right way and make sure our county's doing things the right way. I hate to be one to open up rooms that may be potentially closing at this time, but I do have to say once again that I feel a sentiment of disappointment in our current board. And just want to provide a quick comparison and analogy. So the analogy I'd like to provide tonight for the Board of Commissioners, and please understand that this is coming from truly a place of love and hope that you receive it from a place of understanding. In that, tonight, our Board of 72 passed a policy in regards to all trees and has specific provisions for one separate tree that's roots because of the way it grows, the root system's growth, so we have to trim it a particular way to make sure that an invasive species, oak wilt, does not spread and kill a group of those trees. I want to give you the analogy of the trees that are people in our community and the policy that I requested that was humanously supported to be at least looked at and brought back to this county commission by the way of an equity policy. And by the way, that just like this tree system that you guys are talking about is potentially at risk because of an invasive species, there is a particular group of individuals in our community right now that are at risk by a particular invasive species that's been in our community and in our country for the last 400 years by the systemic racism. And I would just like to make that comparison and show it to you now and hope that you again reconsider the thought that our county could very much benefit from an equity policy that would specifically help a group of individuals in our community from, uh, because there's invasive species, systemic racism in our county. And we come in from a place of love and hope that will be cut out that I believe by the commissioner who said that in our last meeting, I said that you guys were being racist. I went back and I reviewed the comments that I made in that last meeting and I didn't mention anything about anybody being racist. When it comes to systemic racism, there's not an individual who's at fault. There's not an individual who's to blame because it's a system that's been built. And I think that we should take some time. This board unanimously supported, unanimously supported us to look at an equity policy. So while I appreciate and I thank the Anti-Discrimination Committee for the work that they're doing, that we're requesting, and it is not what was unanimously supported after the comments that I made about George Floyd. So I would also at this time like to direct the Anti-Discrimination Committee to redirect it to not discuss an equity policy. I'd also like to respectfully redirect that request to our Administrator's office to look at this money, the Washington County Equity Policy that was created, and bring back to the Board of Commissioners in the same form and fashion and time of urgency that the tree policy was created and brought back to this Board of Commissioners for consideration. And again, this is coming from a place of love and hopefully received from a place of understanding by my fellow commissioners.
Other Commissioner comments? Mr. Polaski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just like to say a word of appreciation to our county clerk and our elections director and all of those at the various townships and the cities and villages around the county who have conducted an excellent election. Our election process is purposely decentralized. From a control perspective, I think the idea there is to minimize the possibility of error and to minimize the risk of fraud and defalcation in the elections process. And so here in Jackson County, I appreciate very much the work that has been done. The process of certifying continues, and I've heard tonight that, for example, in Wayne County, their Board of Campuses will not certify. So there will be a process there within Wayne County. There will be a process here within Jackson County and elsewhere in Michigan and around the country. And I appreciate the hard work that's been done by everybody that conducted the election. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Other Commissioners?
Tony's got a comment, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Tony.
Okay, I too would like to thank our Jackson County election officials for running a good election here in Jackson County. According to the email that we were given, none of the local Dominion voting systems machines were hooked up to the internet. I hope that is true. I was listening to General Thomas McInerney on the news tonight. He was in the CIA during the Bush administration. And he was talking about how during the Bush administration, the CIA developed two different vote manipulation softwares. One was called Scorecard, one was called Hammer. And the CIA did use these to manipulate national elections in other countries. He says he has had the opportunity to look at some of the Dominion voting systems machines, and yes, he can identify that their CIA software Scorecard was on them. So in certain counties in Michigan, certain states around the nation, votes were not nearly as secure as what I believe they were in Jackson County. There was great voter fraud, manipulation. Sidney Powell is one of the attorneys working with the administration, and she has said any state officials that certify these elections, they're currently being sued, that those individual state persons, she will file a suit against them. We have got to go through a proper recount. You can't have hundreds of thousands of illegal ballots show up. You can't have the Dominion voting systems machines that are hooked up to the internet. You can't have people in Toronto or in Barcelona manipulating those votes, which that software that is on there gives them the ability to do that. This was incredible voter fraud, and this needs to be gotten down to the end. Voter fraud is one of the worst crimes in my mind that can be committed in this nation because it's not a crime against another individual, it's a crime against the entire nation. If any of this is proved out to be true, those people need to go to jail. And so far, when we've had voter fraud last August, there appears to be no reason not to commit voter fraud because when it's found out, there's no consequences. And that is ridiculous.
Any other Commissioner comments? Any other Commissioner comments? Seeing none, we have no closed session to go into. Entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Supported by Phil Duckham, motion by David Alwell. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Do we pause? Do we carry? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Have a safe evening and be careful.